Can I have a motion to reconvene regular meeting number forty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
That be number four, just for the record. Um, Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
May have a motion to waive the rules of council in Columbus City Code, section one-one-one-point-one-two.
So moved.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Today, council will take the mayor's proposed general fund operating budget from the table. We'll amend it and retable it until our next regular meeting on February twenty-second. This is in alignment with our city's charter requirements. This budget allows council to work with administration to continue to deliver high-quality neighborhood services. I want to thank Mayor Gunther for delivering council a strong operating budget. His leadership has helped us weather this past year and emerge with a sensible, compassionate financial plan. That said, it is, it is the toughest budget in several years because we face such difficult crises in Columbus. The coun- the compounded crises of COVID and restoring trust in our division of police, with a series of reforms under council's vision to reimagine public safety. To address these challenges, today we propose setting aside an additional forty million dollars to support four key areas. The first ten-million-dollar fund is for the COVID response within city operations. The most important thing we can do to fight this pandemic with our public health and our city teams. That means getting our community vaccinated. Second, family support. We know that families are struggling because of the COVID recession, particularly working-class families and families of color. While we need to work with our partners at the federal level, council is also putting new dollars aside to ensure families have access to the assistance they need from some of our key nonprofit agencies. Third, small business support. Last year, we provided more than twelve million dollars in grants to local small businesses. However, many entrepreneurs are still fighting just to keep their doors open. This city must support them in that fight. Fourth, and finally, reimagining public safety. We are offering a unique amendment to set aside another ten million dollars to invest in violence prevention, officer training, accountability, uh, systems, as well as creation of an alternative crisis response operation. The amendments you hear today all flow back to these four pillars: responding to COVID, supporting families, economic recovery, uh, and small business support, and reimagining safety. As we invest in families and our community, the budget will remain balanced, and we will not tap the rainy day fund. This demonstration of fiscal prudence is what allows us to maintain our triple-A bond rating and save taxpayers' dollars with lower interest rates. I've said this said before, and I'll mention again, that my top priority for this budget is a division of alternative crisis response. The mayor and the department leaders are already working with us to advance this mission. This means adding new tools to our toolbox for safety. This also means expanding effective teams that get people care rather than handcuffs, as well as piloting trained civilian response teams for nonviolent, non-threatening instances. As part of our reimagining safety process, we listened to residents and experts through a series of six town halls and received almost four thousand survey responses from our residents. We'll release the final report and hold an additional hearing in the coming weeks to outline all the feedback we received. We are ensuring through this budget that we have funds set aside to invest in the ideas put forward by our residents. I look forward to laying out my priorities later in this meeting after Council President Pro Tim walks us through the budget. We will now go to the Finance Committee. President Pro Tim Elizabeth Brown chairs the committee. All members serve on it. House Member, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you so much, Council President. Um, I, uh, we will get right into the meat of things. Um, as you outlined, we received the mayor's budget proposal in November, and at that time, council commenced with, uh, seven committee-based hearings to review its provisions, which is typical to most years. Um, we added a great deal of, um, time and public feedback to this budget. Um, to, to really, in recognition of the fact that twenty-twenty was so different, we held seven hearings focused on reimagining public safety. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for your work reviewing this budget through your committees and for hosting those hearings. I also want to thank you because this was a, a non-traditional budget process for me. Um, I, given that I, uh, gave birth in the middle of it and, um, and now on a sort of version of, of maternity leave, and the hard work that our, um, that every one of, uh, our colleagues has put in to the hearing process to make sure that this, um, budget process was, um, smooth and prioritized public feedback. Uh, I just am really grateful to all of you and to, to you, Council President, for that. Um, in total, council held more than twenty-two hours of public hearings to review this budget and receive public feedback over our December process, and then again, our January and early February process. As Council President said, we worked with the Saunders Company to collect survey responses and convene focus groups. These were things that last fall, we said, must be incorporated into our council budget. We must have our council budget process, that we must have, um, resident feedback. And hearings are one thing, they're great to do, and we rely on them for feedback as council. But there are many folks who can't participate in hearings for all kinds of reasons, and that is why the Saunders Company, um, uh, was brought on board to make sure that, uh, that we were, uh, we were not going to rest on our laurels when it came to finding ways to incorporate what residents wanted to see in this budget. My goal as Finance Chair every year is to make the budget as open and accessible to residents as possible. Um, but, but this year, more than ever, and I'm grateful to the countless individuals who shared their vision for Columbus during the process to help create a budget that we hope is responsive to the needs of residents and every neighborhood in our city in this unique time. Um, as Council President said, one of the primary changes we're making in this budget via today's amendments are the creation of these three separate funds to address key areas of, of, uh, COVID-nineteen recovery, um, mirroring those created during our distribution of CARES Act dollars last year, and to dedicate, um, real funds to thinking differently, redefining and reimagining public safety in our city. Um, so those are, again, ten million to a reimagined safety fund, ten million to a fund focused on supporting families, ten million to a fund focused on economic recovery, and we're designating ten million to support the city's ongoing efforts to respond to the COVID-nineteen crisis. Some of these funds are being allocated through amendments we are proposing today, but additional allocations of dollars from these funds will continue to be made in the coming weeks and, and, uh, months. I'm proud to sponsor some amendments today that advance our priorities, and I'm going to go through those quickly before I turn things over around the dais to, um, each of my colleagues to talk through their, um, uh, amendment sponsorships. So first, I'm, I'm funding, um, I'm providing funding to continue the Right to Recover Program, which provides emergency financial relief in the form of wage replacement so that people aren't forced to choose between their health and their next paycheck following a positive COVID-nineteen test. Um, I'm support, I'm, uh, amending for support for the city's ongoing implementation of the Financial Empowerment Roadmap, which lays out important steps that help level the playing field for women and families as they strive to achieve financial security. Even before the pandemic, we knew that, uh, one in four families was financially, uh, insecure in Columbus, and the picture is much harder for Black women in our city. Uh, and so when we endeavored to make a difference in financial empowerment, we did so partnering with the Columbus Women's Commission so that we could have a lens on women. When women are strong, kids are strong, families are strong, and our future is strong. I'm also sponsoring an amendment, um, for, uh, assistance programs targeted at pregnant women who are facing housing insecurity. Um, we know that housing insecurity is a greater predictor of, uh, preterm birth than even smoking. Um, I'm sponsoring, I'm, uh, helping programs for individuals who need support to secure the official identification documents they need to achieve economic security and helping students work to pay for post-secondary education. With the support of Councilmember Doran's, there's also additional investment in digital inclusion for students and their families, and, um, also investment in sports programming that provides enrichment for youth in need, as well as violence intervention resources that diffuse conflict across Columbus and help make our city safer for everyone. So thank you for, um, letting me go through my highlights of my own amendments, and we are going to, um, uh, go around the dais to make sure every member has the opportunity, uh, to talk through theirs. So first, I'd like to, uh, turn things over to Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Uh, thank you, Finance Chair Brown, and my colleagues that are present today. As a community, we have focused, uh, faced our share of hardships in twenty-twenty, as everyone knows. We're fortunate as a city to have these resources available to us as we continue to strive towards improving the lives of our residents. Today, I'm proposing budget amendments focused on supporting young people, those returning from incarceration, and our seniors. And proposing funding to continue the Teens and Police Service Academy, TAPS, which connects at-risk middle school students at select Columbus City schools with officers from the Columbus Division of Police. This mentorship program is designed to develop positive and supportive relationships between youth and police. TAPS has a history of producing invaluable results for students and officers through honest conversation, mentorship, and mutual understanding. In addition, I'm proposing additional funding for the Help in Reentry Employment, HIRE, Workforce Development Training Program offered by Alvis. As folks return to our community from incarceration, it is vital that they find stable employment, but often they face barriers that lead to financial hardships and recidivism. The HIRE program is designed to remove those barriers by giving applicants the personal and professional support that they need to be successful, and I'm excited for the opportunity to continue the city's partnership with Alvis in helping members of our community strive for a better life for themselves and their families. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not also emphasize the impact of COVID-nineteen on seniors in our community. That is why I'm providing additional funding for Age Friendly Columbus and Franklin County to assist with community-driven service coordination to meet the needs of our seniors. Age Friendly has been an essential partner during these challenging times, supporting seniors with housing, food, essentials, and compassion. As they continue their work, I employ them to focus on reducing the effects of isolation and finding innovative solutions for the most vulnerable in our community. Through my proposed budget amendments, I hope to connect with members of our community that may feel overlooked. I want them to know that this council is working for them, working to get us through these challenging times, and working towards a future full of opportunities. I look forward to partnering with Mayor Gunther and my council colleagues to ensure the residents, rega- ensure every resident, regardless of the neighborhood, feels safe and supported. With that, I'll turn it over to my council colleague, Mr. Rob Dorn.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Um, first, uh, just want to echo the sentiments of, uh, I think everyone here. Uh, I want to thank our Finance Chair, uh, Council President, uh, Pro Tim Brown, uh, members of council staff for their hard work on the amendments that we're here to talk about today. Uh, additionally, just want to say thanks to Council President Harden, um, to help identify and address the key priorities that he outlined earlier. Uh, we all know that, um, twenty-twenty was a challenging year for, for the city and its residents, and, uh, twenty-twenty-one is, is likely to be as challenging, if not more. Uh, and that's why I, I'm pleased that we as a body have found, uh, numerous opportunities to build stronger families and communities in our city, uh, through these budget amendments. Uh, this is even more important, given the unprecedented challenges that so many in our community are facing right now. Um, I'm proud to take a few moments to speak about a couple of budget amendments, uh, that I've had the opportunity to work with my colleagues on that I believe will have significant impact, uh, on families during this upcoming tough year. Uh, first, uh, as Chair of the Public Utilities Committee on Council, uh, I've been extremely aware that our citizens, uh, need assistance to literally keep the lights on right now. Uh, since the beginning of the pandemic, we've worked with the Department of Public Utilities and outside partners to help many in our community continue to pay their utility bills. Uh, that's why here today, we're amending the operating budget to make another significant investment in utility assistance for residents. Uh, I very much appreciate the Department of Public Utilities' willingness to work with, uh, ten local nonprofits to ensure these funds, uh, get to our residents who may have lost a job due to the pandemic or having trouble making ends meet, uh, and making these important payments to keep literally the lights on, you know, a phone on, the heat on, all the things that, uh, especially in, right now, as we, we endure a pretty cold, pretty cold winter are pretty important for families to, to be able to take care of themselves. Um, this additional eight-hundred-thousand-dollar investment in this budget amendment, we know is going to be helpful in these efforts. Uh, but we know it's not enough to just set money aside, and we needed to reach the folks that are in need. Uh, past utility assistance programs have been lifelines for many, uh, in our community during this pandemic, but all too often, some of these funds, um, folks were not aware who needed them. Uh, that's why we're working to make sure this program will be more accessible, and I certainly ask everyone, um, council, those watching at home, to help us get the word out that this assistance is available. If you knew, if you or someone you know is behind a utility bill, please visit columbus.gov/ utilities to find out more information about this program. Uh, again, this budget amendment is going to help ensure that, uh, these assistance programs continue on through twenty-twenty-one, as so many are still in need. Um, next, I'd like to highlight, uh, an amendment, uh, regarding funding for a Wage Theft Prevention Officer at the City of Columbus. Uh, last year, I worked with my council colleagues to pass a Wage Theft Prevention Ordinance. I created a new section of Columbus City Code. The enactment of Columbus City Code, Chapter three-seven-seven, created the Wage Theft Prevention Enforcement Commission, which has a number of responsibilities related to ensuring the city only contracts with businesses that support workers by paying a fair wage and treating its workforce with dignity. In order to have the commission, uh, be effective, uh, one of my budget amendments will fund a full-time position to provide staff support and perform duties such as working to create and maintain a public department list of companies that have found, have committed wage theft, uh, respond to public complaints filed with the commission, request and review payroll documents submitted by covered entities on the ordinance, and, eh, just as importantly, work with the City of Columbus Office of Diversity Inclusion and outside community groups on educational efforts to make sure that our businesses are in compliance with our new regulations, uh, to ensure that they continue to be able to work with the city when they've done everything right. This full-time employee will be vital in protecting our city's workforce by helping to make sure that they take home the resources that they rightfully earn through their hard work for their families. Next, very quickly, I want to mention, uh, a joint amendment with myself and Council President Harden. Um, the existence of Wage Theft Prevention Office, Office shows that we as a city are trying to do business the right way. That includes diversifying the pool of vendors that the city contracts with. Um, that's why I want to highlight this amendment with Council President Harden, about a hundred thousand dollars that we're setting aside from outreach to minority and women vendors to help them get registered and pre-qualified to do business with the City of Columbus. We know that those small businesses are out there, and we're, we're going to use this money to help do a better job of reaching out to them to create more business opportunities that are inclusive to all of our community. And finally, I wanted to mention, uh, another joint amendment, uh, this time with Council President Pro Tim Elizabeth Brown. Um, the digital divide hasn't been more clear than during this pandemic. Residents need access to reliable and affordable broadband services, whether it's kids, kids attending school, adults working from home. We've clearly seen that many in our community lack access to this important resource. Uh, that's why, again, I'm excited to partner with Council President Pro Town, Pro Tim Brown, uh, for helping to connect more families to broadband through the Department Technology Pilot Program on near西side and south sides of Columbus. As more families are, are working and learning from home, having this is a necessary tool. An internet connection is vital. It's just like another utility. That's why we've worked together to secure an additional three-hundred-thousand dollars in the budget amendment to help build upon these promising, promising pilot projects from, from the Department of Technology. Um, now, I'd like to, yeah, continue to thank, uh, Council President Harden, my colleagues, for their support for these budget amendments and certainly helping to chart, uh, a better future for our city with this operating budget. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to my, my colleague, Councilmember Shayla Faber.
Good morning, and thank you to my colleagues, Council President Harden and Council President Pro Tim Brown, for your work to get us here today. This budget comes before us after a challenging year in which we battled COVID-nineteen, an economic downturn, police brutality, and systemic racism. These challenges come, continue in twenty-twenty-one and with this budget. We have an even greater responsibility to not only stabilize families, but ensure resources are invested back into the community that will promote health, safety, and a sustainable future for all Columbus residents. I want to take this moment to once again thank all of my colleagues, as well as our community members for their engagement in the reimagining public safety process. I've been vocal since last summer about the changes and reforms I believe we must see within policing to make sure all of our community members feel safe and protected in Columbus. I truly believe that we, that by reinvesting in our community, our people, businesses, and institutions, we will see the results we desire. Reinvesting in the community means we will focus our work towards stabilizing households, eliminating poverty, decreasing violence, strengthening our workforce, and creating opportunities for those who need them most. Housing stability remains a top priority as our city's housing crisis has only been exasperated by the pandemic. Last fall, I began work on the Housing for All Legislative Package, which includes legislation to ban source-of-income discrimination, legislation to provide renters with options to pay the security deposit, and finally, legislation that will require landlords to provide tenants with a receipt when rent is paid with cash or a money order. Council will consider this legislation in the next month, and I have de- dedicated resources towards a community education program that will aim to educate both tenants and landlords on their rights and responsibilities. Eviction Court continues to operate at the Greater Columbus Convention Center. Columbus has been fortunate to delay a wave in evictions in large part due to federal dollars that have been applied to rental assistance, as well as to the many housing advocates and partners assisting tenants at eviction court through the daunting legal process of evictions. I am proud to support additional funding for the Legal Aid Society of Columbus's Tenant Advocacy Project, or TAC, which aims to lower the displacement of low-income tenants caused by eviction and help increase access to affordable housing. Thank you again to Ben Horn and the Columbus Legal Aid for their truly important work in this space. We also cannot forget about the new American families experiencing the daunting realities of immigration enforcement in our community. The Columbus Families Together Fund was launched in two thousand seventeen to help protect immigrant and refugee families from aggressive immigration enforcement through legal support and workshops. Thank you to Council President Pro Tim Brown for her leadership on establishing this initiative. I look forward to continuing the support of this work in twenty-twenty-one. Last year, our nation grappled with the impact of systemic racism on our communities. The renewed energy of the Black Lives Matter movement was birthed from the pain of the murder of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Casey Goodson Jr. and Andre Hill right here in Columbus. Deliver Black Dreams was created by Marshall Shortz to channel the frustration into an opportunity to not only truly learn about our past, but also reimagine a better future for Black and Brown people. Deliver Black Dreams is a racial equity campaign that seeks long-term community change in the cultural appreciation and future of Black residents. Additional funding in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one will not only support new public art murals in designated locations across the city, but provide educational and vocational opportunities for the greater Columbus community. Thank you again to Marshall Shortz, Sherry Neal, as well as GCAC for the past and future work on this effort. Finally, as we continue to reimagine what public safety truly looks like in Columbus, we must focus our attention on our most important assets, our youth. This year, I will continue our work with Columbus City Schools through the Columbus Youth Council, which provides our young people with the opportunity to learn about city government and how to become stewards of their community. I will also be working on an effort to address some of the most vulnerable youth in our community, our eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds who are not in school and unemployed. By providing skills training, education, jobs, and coaching, we have the ability to put our young people on the path to success and keep them out of our justice system. If this budget tells us anything, it is that the work is far from finished, and we have a lot more to do. I look forward to working with my colleagues, council staff, community partners, and Columbus residents over the next year to strengthen these investments in our community. Thank you. It's now my honor to introduce my colleague, Councilmember Emmanuel Remy.
Thank you so much, um, Councilmember Faber. Appreciate, uh, your initiatives and certainly join you and, and support. Um, I want to thank the Council President's office and my colleagues for their support with these initiatives. Thank you to the mayor's office for joining me and recognizing these needs and their support of these initiatives. And most importantly, thank you, the residents of Columbus, for your ongoing feedback and advocacy for initiatives such as these to make Columbus an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. The first priority I would like to focus on is the Cleaner Columbus Employment Program. Throughout the city of Columbus, our neighborhoods continue to address challenges with litter, debris, and illegal dumping, especially within our opportunity areas. In an effort to support residents and communities hardest hit by the pandemic, who, in many cases, also saw increased amounts of li- litter and debris, in November twenty-twenty, I worked with community support organizations to launch the Cleaner Columbus Employment Program. The goal of the program was twofold: to create temporary employment to local residents experiencing financial hardships during a pandemic, while reducing the amount of litter and debris in our opportunity neighborhoods. While practicing social distancing and using per- personal protective equipment, each worker was paid a minimum of fifteen dollars per hour and deployed in the Linden, Franklinton, Hilltop neighborhoods, with additional targeted areas in the South and East Columbus. The three-week initiative was a resounding success. Using two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in CARES funding, the workforce for the Cleaner Columbus Employment Program collected fifty-three percent of the total weight of litter collected in all of two thousand nineteen, when there was no pandemic. They collected five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine bags of litter and debris. They collected a total weight of a hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy pounds. This year, I am requesting five-hundred-thousand dollars to continue the Cleaner Columbus Employment Program into twenty-twenty-one. Our goal is to administer this program twice in twenty-twenty-one, and we are looking at an early summer and late fall deployment of this program. In addition to this initiative, this office will continue to lead the work on behalf of council to further diversify its workforce, making a deliberative effort to hire members of our new American refugee and immigrant communities so our eighty-five-hundred full-time employees are more reflective of, of the community in which it serves. Our ongoing pilot program within civil service, a language access policy for the city, and continual efforts to push every department to hire from within our new American refugee and immigrant community serves the city of Columbus in the best ways and will continue to make us a top employer with best practices within the region and the state of Ohio. I would now like to turn the podium over to my colleague, Councilmember Priscilla Tyson. Good morning, Councilmember.
Good morning, Councilmember. Um, good morning, and as I join my colleagues virtually to discuss our budget priorities, I'm grateful that we have this opportunity to fund programs and initiatives that can improve the quality of life for our Columbus residents. I would like to also thank President Pro Tim Elizabeth Brown for leading us through this budget process. I understand that there, that there was already significant need in the city prior to COVID, especially in the areas of human services and workforce development. And the pandemic, pandemic has shed a light on the inequities that exist in our community. As I consider issues that need to be addressed in our city, I'm committed to supporting initiatives that enhance the quality of life for Columbus residents from an equity perspective. We know that African-Americans and residents that live in high-priority zip codes, such as the Celebrate One Neighborhoods, are disproportionately impacted by the social determinants of health, including employment, poverty, food insecurity, healthcare, housing, transportation, and public safety. As I think about our community's priorities through the lens of the social determinants of health, I am prioritizing efforts in which I have seen progress, such as the Local Food Action Plan and the Commission on Black Girls. I will also be furthering my efforts in areas such as workforce development and healthcare. Many times, for policy changes to make a real impact that is seen and felt by the entire community... Many times, for policy changes to make a real impact that is seen and felt by the entire community, the timeline is long and the challenge is incremental. And this has been true for both the Local Food Action Plan and the Commission on Black Girls. For each initiative, we created well-researched reports with recommendations and action plans. I remain committed to the full implementation of the recommendations and actions of both reports, and will be amending the 2021 budget to include funding for these initiatives. In 2017, we began implementing the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan to address food insecurity and other food-related issues in our community. We have made significant progress over the last several years. But specifically in 2020, we have a few highlights. 2020 marked the first year that Scotts Miracle-Gro Foundation, the city of Columbus, and Franklin County jointly facilitated the Urban Gardening Grant. Grants were able to support 100% of the eligible grant applications received, funding 72 community gardens located in the city of Columbus and Franklin County. More than 54% of the supported gardens were located in Celebrate One priority areas. Also, along with Kroger Zero Hunger Zero Waste Foundation, I sponsored funding for the Ohio Farmers Market Network that led a pilot program to support local farmers and bring more fresh and local produce to our communities through a program called Farms Share, which stands for Farmers Supporting Health and Racial Equity. The program was designed to engage Black growers and Black-led, community-led organizations that serve Black and Brown residents. The program connected five local producers to six host organizations. And over the 10-week program, more than 2,500 pounds and 42 varieties of fresh local produce was purchased and distributed to more than 1,400 residents. Approximately 60% of the participating growers identified as Black, 80% of the host locations were Black-led, and approximately 84% of the residents served were Black, Indigenous, or people of color. Distribution models included free produce giveaways, low-cost farmers' markets and stands, and a CSA delivery. The project will continue in 2021, offering a longer season and serving more residents. With COVID funding, the city was also able to provide funding to the Mid-Ohio Food Collective, which reports serving 28% more residents than it did in 2019, and Life Care Alliance, which reports that by June of 2020, the Meals on Wheels program was delivering 65% more meals than on March 1 of 2020. Mid-Ohio received nearly $2 million, and Life Care Alliance received around $400,000. This is just a few of the achievements which aligns with the goals of Local Food Action Plan. This work must continue, as we know that almost 60% of Black households in Columbus are food insecure, compared to less than 25% of white households. As we plan for the 2021 investments, we have to address disparities such as this. I applaud the Local Food Board for adopting the statement on racism in the food system and look forward to working together to advance anti-racist food system efforts and build a food system that benefits our economy, our environment, and all people. The Commission on Black Girls is another priority area that is associated with many other social determinants of health. In 2018, I created the commission because we know that Black women are being evicted, they're in the homeless shelter, and more likely to experience poverty and experience infant mortality as well as maternal mortality at significant higher rates than white women. To change the trajectory of Black women's lives, and again, my colleagues have also spoken on the initiatives they're working on to support Black women, but Black girls must be given the resources and benefits to improve their quality of life and the tools to make good long-term decisions. The purpose of the commission was to enhance the quality of life of Black girls focused on Girls 11 to 22. Last year was a big year for the Commission on Black Girls. In July of 2020, the commission released a report titled "A Report on the Quality of Life of Black Girls in Columbus." The recommendations of the report will serve as a foundation of the commission's work and the 2021 investments that will be made as a result of today's budget amendment. Along with the one overarching recommendation, there are three strategies and 17 additional recommendations included in this report. And again, the first recommendation was therefore to have a permanent home. The first strategy really focuses on creating an environment that is free of racism and that impairs the ability of Black girls to see themselves and be seen in a manner that fosters their ability to develop and maintain a positive quality of life perspective to the same extent as their non-Black peers. Strategy two is to create and strengthen holistic systemic approaches to address and disrupt pervasive cycles of education, health, and economic societal inequities that adversely impacts the progress of Black girls toward their individual quality of life. And the last strategy is to advocate for resources and initiatives that will enhance the successful quality of life pathways for Black girls. I'm pleased to report that we have already accomplished the overarching recommendation. On December 14, we passed legislation, as council did, to transition this work to the Center for Healthy Families. To ensure the successful implementation of the recommendations, including this report, I will provide funding to support the commission functioning under the umbrella of the Center for Healthy Families. The center is well-equipped to do the work and to lead the commission in its next phase of becoming a renowned community resource that advocates for Black girls. I will also conclude by mentioning a few other initiatives targeting the social determinants of health I will continue to focus on throughout the year. I'm committed to furthering my understanding of unmet needs of residents as well as the needs of uninsured, underinsured, and insured residents that utilize our community health centers. I will also work on identifying innovative workforce development opportunities that will allow residents to improve their financial outlook. Additionally, I'll be giving consideration to the transportation needs and emergency car repair and other options that will ensure that residents have transportation to get to jobs. As we know, many residents are only one car repair away from losing their mobility and not being able to get to work consistently, which can lead to other challenges. And finally, as a part of the reimaging public safety efforts, I'll be working with President Harden and Public Safety Chair Mitchell Brown to identify strategies to enhance alternative response programming that provides residents with the most appropriate interventions. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk about my budget priorities and initiatives. I want to thank my council colleagues for their ongoing support. And again, I want to now, and also want to thank the administration for their ongoing support. And now I would like to pass the mic back to Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Thank you to Chair Brown. And thank you to Finance Director Lombardi, as well as all the directors that have worked with my colleagues and will work with our council to implement this budget. As we mentioned previously, council will create four funds: one for COVID response, family support, economic recovery, and small business support, and reimagining safety. The first three funds will be seeded with $10 million each from the Basic City Services Fund. The reimagining safety fund will be seeded with $7.5 million from the Basic City Services Fund and $2.5 million from the general fund. Using the dollars set aside from the Basic City Services Fund, we're providing initial seed dollars to create a new division of alternative crisis response. This new division will house both co-responder models, like the Mobile Crisis Response Team, and in the future, trained civilian response teams to answer calls for nonviolent mental and behavioral calls, addiction individuals, and individuals experiencing homelessness, and more. This will add to the momentum for reform and invest in our people and neighborhoods to prevent violent crime, a message that we heard loud and clear through our hearings. I have repeatedly said this is the most important reform I believe the city can make when reimagining public safety. We're setting aside dollars to ensure this new alternative crisis response division gets off the ground. Again, I again want to thank Mayor Gunther and his team for a steadfast partnership on this priority. Separated from the new division of alternative crisis response, council will be investing in violence prevention and improving the Division of Police. The division is being challenged, and I want to be clear that I believe the vast majority of our officers who want to do what is right are on the streets. But to build back trust, we also must take the time to embrace changes, install new leadership, finish the important studies now occurring on recruiting and training. More than $1.5 million will be designated for additional community-based violence intervention. This includes special work with folks like Sean Stevenson and his group End the Violence, who have been critical on Livingston Avenue when it comes to engaging unemployed young men. We'll also work with other neighborhood intervention organizations to support these efforts. I want to thank particularly Councilmember Mitch Brown, Councilmember Shayla Faber, and President Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown for helping to drive that work forward. $50,000 will go towards domestic violence prevention and response through local service providers. More than $250,000 will go to new medical training and first aid equipment for officers to fully implement Andre's Law. Approximately $250,000 will go towards employment for opportunity youth involved in the justice system championed by Councilmember Faber. We're providing $1 million for the creation of the Civilian Review Board and hiring of the Inspector General. The public health budget contains funding for social workers who can help create a more responsive and flexible crisis response toolbox. In November of 2020, council voted to hire an independent professional to audit the recruitment, civil service, and hiring practices for the Division of Police. This is based on recommendation number 13 from the Community Safety Advisory Commission. We are currently in the middle of this audit to ensure we have the best possible officers serving our community. I believe that we should wait until this audit is complete to hire additional officers. We have an obligation to ensure we're hiring the best people for our community. I'm moving that we delay our new police class until this audit is complete. We know there are countless, countless good officers working to serve this city every day. Both they and our residents deserve to know that the recruitment and screening process is rigorous and puts the best possible public servants into the Division of Police. We expect this report back later this year and for there to be a police class in this December. Delaying this class amounts to a $2.5 million reallocation. We believe this reallocation is reasonable, especially considering that those funds will be redirected to aligned efforts, including anti-youth violence intervention, medical training, and first aid equipment for officers to implement Andre's Law, and youth workforce development. I know this decision will not sit well with many amidst a spike in crime. Just last night, last night, our city lost a 14-year-old to violence in our neighborhoods. For the last year and a half, I've called every parent of a youth killed in our city. It is heartbreaking. But let me be clear. This work of keeping our community safe is not just on our Division of Police. It's on each and every one of us. Just adding officers is not going to solve our problems. We need the Division and each officer to embrace change, to hold themselves accountable, but also to reengage with community policing. A police class that graduates at the beginning of next year is not the silver bullet for our crime problems today. And while we await a new chief and work to retool recruiting and training, we are putting forward a second amendment that not only invests in violence prevention, but also delays that June recruit class. It is on all of us to ensure that we are doing everything in our power to stop the violence. And I believe that we must take the time to get the next class right. We have more than 1,800 officers, and while I know delaying a class of 45 will not be popular, it is not our responsibility to do what's popular. I'm here to make sure the system actually works for all residents. We need every officer to fulfill their oath, and we need residents to work with them to keep us safe. Working with the mayor, with Safety Director Pettis, Council Safety Chair Mitch Brown, and many others, our plan is to invest in larger classes in December and classes in '22 with our new leadership in place. By then, we will also have a civilian review commission and inspector general in place and have done the work to start rebuilding the bond of civic trust that were so badly fractured in the previous years. On an individual level, and as a matter of policy, I know many folks are stuck in the house, disconnected from young folks on their block. But we need to embrace our young people, give them the jobs and things to do to prevent another generation from getting lost down a bad path. Again, it's on all of us to keep our city safe. I ask the stakeholders on all sides to show grace and patience as we walk forward with reform. While much of council's focus has been on reimaging safety, I'm happy to announce we will also continue fighting for a future of Columbus we need to build in the area of transportation and development by funding the regional partnership of Link Us Transit Initiative. By 2050, Central Ohio is expected to be a region of 3 million people. Today, most people rely on cars to get to and from their destinations. However, there is also an opportunity to improve mobility choices and shape how the region grows in a manner that will increase transportation reliability, manage congestion, support workers, provide access to housing, and improve our quality of life. That collaborative work between the city, Coda, Morpsey, and Franklin County will advance a new comprehensive mobility system for our region. Finally, this budget ensures the implementation of the disparity study. Implementing the recommendations from the disparity study will start to put people of color and women-owned businesses on the same playing field as the majority firms when it comes to our city's contracts. At the end of the day, our top priority is COVID response. That means supporting families and helping small businesses keep their doors open. And while we respond to these crises, and we know that council needs to continue pushing reform and pushing towards a safer city. With that, I'll turn the floor back over to President Pro Tem for the amendment and retabling of the budget. President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Council President Harden. I think it's clear from the amendments offered by my colleagues and from the significant changes that this council pursued over the last several months in how we imagine and redefine public safety, that our priority in this budget has been to listen to folks, to listen to residents who are reaching out to us, and to really strive for a safer and more equitable future for Columbus. So I appreciate so much everyone's work in doing that. And I want to move to the ordinances now so that we can officially amend the budget as it was presented. I want to make clear that at the end of this, I'll be moving to table until February 22, so tonight does not count as passage, or today does not count as passage of the budget. It's really always night when you have a newborn, or always day, actually. I don't know, one or the other. But today, we won't be passing the full budget. We will be amending it. And it is the culmination of those hours of work in public that you saw us doing and the many more hours behind the scenes. So again, I want to express my gratitude. And I will move now to ordinance 2502-2020 to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31, 2021, for each of the several object classes for which the city of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be in the treasury of said city of Columbus and the fund known as the general fund during the said 12 months from the collection of all taxes and from other sources of revenue, the amount of $964 million, and to declare an emergency. I'd first like to move to take ordinance 2502-2020 from the table. Do you have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Remove from the table.
I'd like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
That is our First Amendment, Ordinance 2502. There is a Second Amendment which specifically pertains to this council's reimagining public safety effort, specifically the items that Council President outlined just before this section of the meeting. And I'd like to ask Council President to present this amendment.
Thank you, President Pro Tem or Madam Chair. I will now introduce the Second Amendment. This amendment creates the Reimagining Safety Fund. It transfers $7.5 million from the Basic City Services Fund into this newly-created fund and transfers $2.5 million from the public safety budget, in total, creating a $10 million fund for reimagining safety. I move to amend as submitted to the clerk. Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Reemy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
I'm going to have to vote no for part of that. Well, I'm voting no on it because I still need some other additional information regarding this particular amendment. So I have to vote no until I gather that information. Thank you.
President Harden?
Yes. President Pro Tem? I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you, Council President. I'm grateful for this council's action to go further and think differently about how we keep every resident safe. We are not always in agreement, but we are all striving to keep every resident safe. So thank you, Council President, for your leadership. I move to table until February 22nd.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is tabled.
Thank you. And again, that tabling is in order to wait until our regular meeting on the 22nd to pass, per usual. I'm sorry, everyone. Then next, we are moving on to Ordinance 2503-2020 to make appropriations and transfers for the 12 months ending December 31, 2021 for other funds for various divisions to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. So I first moved to take Ordinance 2503 from the table.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Remove from table.
I then moved to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
And I move to table until February 22nd.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Tabled until the 22nd.
Thank you. We will take up the full budget to consider for passage on the 22nd. And this concludes the business in front of the Finance Committee. I will turn it back over to you, I think, Council President, to actually close the meeting. But thank you very much.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Also, I want to thank all of my colleagues and the members of the public for engagement in this budget process. While amended budget sets framework for COVID response and investing in our community, there is ample work ahead of this council. This includes releasing the feedback we receive via the Reimagining Safety Survey and town halls. This budget is just the start of how we invest and the ideas put forward by residents. I will give many more thanks and we'll have much more discussion on the 22nd about these amendments in the budget. We look forward to hearing from you and folks engaging in this process. This is how we move our city forward, through hearing from our residents, by doing the hard work, by deep deliberation, and then by taking a vote. I also want to thank our many staff who have worked really hard to get us to this point. With that, is there any other business to come before council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
We are adjourned.